Call the meeting to order, ask for roll call.
Here. Blue New York. Hilliard. Leach?
Here.
Menold?
Here.
Newman?
Here.
We have a call.
Join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no public hearing or special reports, any public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Lee Ann Brown with the Morton Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council. Good that we're back and being able to gather and get people together and certainly we are excited about where we're at with knowing our festival comes September, that we can really open up our planning and feel like we can keep everybody safe and host a gathered, connected festival on grounds. But before that, we have several things upcoming. Of course, Fourth Fridays, this Friday is a Fourth Friday, so Four Fridays will take place in the downtown area, 5 to 8 o'clock. Another item that you can swing by and celebrate in what used to be Binkley's Jewelers, we have the design den that has occupied that space. And we've corresponded with Becky Flutter, who is the owner of that business, and we'll be doing a ribbon cutting with her this Friday at 5:15. Also, a couple other things. Speaking of festival, stay tuned, keep your eye on website, social media. We'll start to open up registrations for a lot of our events and activities. Of course, I think it was last week, we awarded our parade marshal from the committee. They reviewed several nominations, and Wayne Menold is our parade marshal. So we celebrated that, recognizing him last week as our parade marshal. And I'm sure it'll be a fun, entertaining year if you know Wayne. You're always laughing when you're around Wayne, and he's, of course, been a big part of our community, a big part of festival and a lot of other aspects for many years. The parade, speaking of the parade, the application's open for that. So we encourage organizations and businesses to go ahead and get signed up to be a part of the annual festival parade. Certainly, a long parade that we host here in Morton with quality candy. We seem to attract a lot of visitors. Of course, classic race, the 10K and walk is open. And then new this year, we're going to host a pumpkin chili cook-off. This will be an early event. We will be hosting this on August 7th in partnership with Potter's Alley and Morton Youth Baseball Association. So we will have a pumpkin chili cook-off where you can sample the recipes entered. And we'll also, in conjunction with that, host our recipe challenge there at Potter's Alley. And we plan on having entertainment, and the Morton Youth Baseball Association is going to bring some family and kid activities over. And that will kick off our festival season. Couple other things to note. We were in Miss Vicki's South last week. We awarded them a EDC micro grant, and they are well underway with renovations in Miss Vicki's South that will be open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Anticipate a September open date. They're just doing an incredible job of remodeling in there. Everyone's going to be beyond surprised and pleased of the renovations and generating some growth in traffic there at the Field Shopping Center. Also, this Wednesday, Arby's is in their new location, and we are hosting a grand opening with them this Wednesday at 9:30 a.m. So if any of the mayor trustees, village team want to join us, we'll be there 9:30 this Wednesday to celebrate their new location and welcome them to Morton. And they did a great job of building that new site. So with that, that's all I wanted to share. Happy to take any questions or anything else.
Thank you, Lee Ann. The consent agenda tonight is a regular meeting of June 7th, 2021, and the approval of the bills. We could have a motion?
I still move.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Leach?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have nothing tonight. Village Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator?
Well, some work for me. I don't think we have that many. I had a couple of things tonight, Your Honor. The first of which is asking for approval of the last of the second round of business sustainability grants. This is for the training domain in the amount of $5,867.92.
We have a motion.
I may have approval. Second.
Any other comments?
I will say, in relation to this, I had reached out to the state of Illinois. They did get back to me late this afternoon that they are going to allow us to modify our grant yet again and do another round. But I haven't even had time to look at, they had talked about maybe expanding the... Currently, we had only been looking at expenses incurred from March 2020 through December 2020. And preliminarily, they said we might be able to expand that. But I haven't looked at what they sent me yet, so I'll get back to you all and what we can do with that.
Looks like we have $100,000 yet to spend?
Just over $100,000 yet to spend, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Leach?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'd like to thank both you and trustee Leach on that. That's a lot of work.
Yes, it is. It's a lot of work for the businesses too, but it's well worth it for them too. The next item I have is a recommendation from the Business District Commission for a grant for Miss Vicki's. As Lee Ann was just discussing, they have applied for a grant for $13,500 for re-siding the building exterior with vinyl siding. I don't know if you've ever noticed, but it's kind of a caution orange. I wouldn't even call it a pumpkin orange currently. It's pretty bright, so.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Herr?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the last item I have tonight is Resolution 03-22. This is a resolution appointing authorized representatives to serve on the panel of the Police Pension Fund.
Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Basically, what this is, we received a letter from the New Illinois Police Officers Pension Investment Fund, which was, as you know, the governor and the legislature approved consolidating all downstate local police and fire pensions into a single fund. They requesting us to appoint two representatives who, pretty much it sounds like, will just have the clerical duties of making sure that all the paperwork gets to them and all the information that they send gets to you guys, is what it seems to me. So that's what this is for.
Any questions?
I just, out of curiosity, previous to this, each municipality had their own pension fund, right?
Correct.
I guess both police and fire, in our case, particularly police. So with this new legislation, that has been consolidated into a state managed program?
It's in the process of being that. Hopefully, something similar to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. I had hoped when this originally came out that that's who they were going to have do this because IMRF has got the system down, is like at 97% funded, you know, does a really great job managing assets, but they didn't. They set up this separate Illinois Police Officers Pension Investment Fund. There's a board that was appointed by the governor. The director was appointed by the governor. So we'll see, you know. My personal opinion and the opinion of our current pension board trustees is we're going to hold on to our money until we absolutely positively have to send it to them. We're sitting on currently about $14 million in that fund. And we're a lot better funded than many. I think we're amongst the top 10 in the state of Illinois for municipalities for our funding percentage. So unless, when they tell us we have to, we'll do it.
Yeah. Well, I guess that was my, going to be my next question. How in the world will they provide any equity between communities? Or do you still maintain separate accounts?
Currently, like in IMRF, they take everybody's money and they pool it together and they invest it. But like Village of Morton's money is separately accounted for. So our contribution factor and everything is based on our employee base and our return on our assets. So I'm hopeful that that's how it will be done for this, on a statewide level. We're not too sure that that's what's going to happen because there are some... There are police pension funds in the state that are like 2% funded.
Right.
You know, in the last, I don't remember our last 80...
It was pretty high.
Yeah, 85% funded. I don't know, just off the top of my head. You know, so it's, it would be dreadfully sad to see if our money goes in and it all gets pooled together and it pulls our funding percentage way down. You know, we currently fund our pension at a greater rate than what the state requires. The State Department of Insurance always sends us a letter every year saying, "You have to put in X dollars." Well, what we're putting in is usually a couple hundred thousand dollars more than what they say is absolutely necessary. So I'm hoping that it doesn't do that because if, you know, if we're only going to put in what we absolutely have to, it's going to end up that everybody's going to be in the same pot, you know. There's going to be low funding, less return.
So we really don't know for sure how all this is going to shake out?
No, it's all still in the works. This was the first thing I'd ever seen in regards to an actual organization reaching out about it. So I'm assuming it's just in the initial phases.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Herr?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Leach?
Yes.
Menold?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is that all you have, Julie?
Yes, that's all I have.
Chief of Police?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation Counsel?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works isn't here. Zoning? Village Trustees? Any of you have anything?
Yes, Your Honor, I have, just to inform the other trustees. At last Wednesday's ETSB meeting, we were told that Motorola has offered an incentive for early order of radios, that would be for police and fire and public works. If you remember, in January, I talked about switching over to the Starcom system and getting off of our own system. And the incentive that they're offering is a five-year warranty if we order radios by June 30th. Normally, it's a three-year warranty. From what was discussed at the ETSB meeting last week, it sounds like Motorola is expected to move faster about getting Starcom up and ready to run than what was maybe originally talked about last fall. So with that, the reason that they would give you the five-year warranty is is there will probably be about maybe six to nine months where you wouldn't have a use for them yet. So they don't want you to order them and then have, you know, two and a half years warranty left. So they're offering the five-year warranty, but will probably get about four and a half years' use out of the warranty. So I gave you the quote that for the Morton Police Department, you would see on page two, it has the dollar amount that we would spend on police radios. And the incentive that's listed on here is the discount incentive, right? So that one is offered through July 16th, but our five-year warranty, we would have to order by next Wednesday to have that five-year warranty. So the idea is, is that as long as it's okay with, you know, the three of you and the mayor, I would look at getting with the police, public works, and ordering radios. We probably won't for the Fire Department because they requested a grant from the federal government and they can't have, you know, placed the order yet. So we could lose the grant if we did that. So unfortunately, we'll have to just have a three-year warranty when we order those radios. So any questions about just that incentive?
I have a couple, couple of quick questions.
Sure.
This is the radio that, refresh my memory, this is what we were going to, anyway, you know, this is not a new idea, these radios, is just getting them before the system is actually in place.
Correct.
What, you talked about six months, maybe, that we wouldn't be able to use them, we'll have the radios, won't be able to use them. What if that turns into a year we can't use? Is there a, we'll for sure have use of them by...
Yeah, well, June 1st, the system has to be turned on and ready to go of 2022.
Okay.
Okay, so the contract says the system has to be up and running by then. It sounds like, though, that it could be maybe March or April of 2022. And so it'd be, you know, the five-year warranty would start from when they ship us the radios, not when we order them. So I don't know how long it'll take, but I do know that the Tazewell County Sheriff's Department was placing his order today for those. So this is just the radios that we would use for police, fire, and public works. But there's a couple other things that we need to remember that we have to make decisions on. One of them, we have pagers for our volunteer firemen, so that if there's a fire call, you know, the pager rings. And Chief Kelly, if I say anything wrong, correct me.
Here, right above.
Okay, so they have a pager that tells them that there's a fire call, and there could be other instructions coming across the pager. That paging system is on the tower that is downtown behind the old police and fire department. That tower needs to come down probably in less than two years. When we switch over to this new system for Starcom, we might switch over to Starcom pagers as well and eliminate our need for our own paging system. And we wouldn't have to move it to another location. If we don't do that, we would move our existing radio repeater, which is in the basement of the old police station, and move it to a new location and have to put up some type of tower. Hopefully, it wouldn't have to be very tall, and it shouldn't be permanent because I would see, you know, shortly, we would be going to digital pagers anyway. So that's one thing to remember. The second thing is, is that the civil defense sirens are also operated by radio system. And Chief Miller, if I say anything wrong, correct me? So that's also a radio system that we would look at maybe eliminating if we can, utilizing Starcom as well. But we would have to probably invest in digital radios that would go to each civil defense siren location. If not, we would probably have to build a building to house, is that right?
If we do the analog and we put it on a non-existent, like a water tower, then we would have to build a base station to hold the base radios.
Right, so we'd have to invest in radios. You know, I suggested maybe we could put antennas on one of the other water towers other than the one that's here on Detroit. You have the problem of the antenna's not on the very top, you know, you might have blockage or whatever. I think there's probably ways around it, but I'm not sure at this point. But that's another issue that we have to resolve as well. What are we going to do with the civil defense sirens? And what is something that we could utilize, maybe the Starcom system, to do both the paging for the volunteer firemen and notify on the current civil defense sirens? And the reason why I think we'd want to do that is, is that the Starcom system is going to have seven to nine towers in Tazewell County alone, whereas we have one tower. If anything happens to that one tower, we're knocked out. We would have backup because of the other towers that are available. Plus, towers that are in southern Woodford County and eastern Peoria County might also be backup as well. One of the things, just to remind you, is that when we switch over to the radios for the volunteer firemen, when they're on calls, the nice thing about it is that if we assist another department, we have the same communication, no matter where they're at in Tazewell County, as if they were in Morton because of those backup towers. So the other issue that you don't see any price here for yet is the idea of what do we do with the pagers for the firemen? And what do we do with the current civil defense sirens? And how do we provide communication there? So hopefully, by the time that we do our appropriation ordinance, we'll already have those dollar amounts added in if they haven't been put in already. So any questions?
If I may, either trustee Leach or Chief Kelly, what are we looking at in the way of numbers of radios and whatnot for the Fire Department?
I had budgeted for pagers this year, looking at about 35 pagers. And the pagers that we're looking at are dual-banded, meaning they'll work on our old system and the new system. So when the day comes that we go to switch, we just switch them. I don't have total numbers in front of me about the rest of the radios, but obviously, one for each of our vehicles. And then we have two to three portables per vehicle. And then our officers carry portable radios as well, fire officers, that is. So, you know, it's a pretty significant number. Those are also dual-banded. And the reason for that is that we do talk to some locations that won't be on this system. And the best example of that is the hospital. There's a radio frequency when we're transporting a person to the hospital that we call the hospital and notify them we're coming in. Obviously, they're not going to be on our new system, but our radio, these radios will be capable of working on old systems and new systems, VHF and digital.
And there is a grant application that's been submitted for the cost of these radios for the Fire Department?
Yes, it won't cover the entire cost. This is a regional grant where we participated with all the rest of the Fire Departments in Tazewell County, put in one grant application for all of us. It probably won't be funded to the point that it's going to pay for everything for every department in the county. We were looking at probably offsetting the cost somewhere around $50,000 from that grant if we were to get lucky enough to get it.
And when do you expect award to be announced?
It's the federal government, so I don't know. Last year, they got held up by COVID, and the new applications had gone in for the next fiscal year before they awarded the old ones. So that took a year, but I don't anticipate this year, it'll take a year, but you never know.
But you will have to move, if at some point, you're going to have to make a decision to move without the grant?
Right.
Once Starcom comes online and...
And that's why we're...
Prior to Starcom coming online.
And all the rest of, frankly, all the rest of the Fire Departments will be in the same boat. I mean, with the original date of June 1st, kind of looking in that area, we thought that we would have until the next fiscal year to, you know, take care of this and figure out where it was going to be. But if that timetable moves forward faster than that, then we may have to make a decision at some point. But every Fire Department will have to make that same decision as well because the grant would be awarded to each Fire Department. And unfortunately, the federal government doesn't allow you to refund, to purchase something and then refund yourself for that purchase. It has to be for a purchase that isn't yet made.
Of course, oh, excuse me, one more. And what did we budget for police and public works radios, do you remember?
I don't remember, but I asked Julie to give me that information tomorrow. So I'll make sure that you all get a notice of what that was.
On the police side, it was about $105,000.
So it more than covered, I mean, we'd budgeted more than...
There's still maybe some expenditures down the road, training, a template that sets up the radio frequencies itself. A lot of that's to be determined because if, say, we decided with East Peoria or Tazewell County that we want the same frequencies on our radios, we could split the cost of those template fees. So I did budget extra just to make sure we were covered with all of that.
You said police was 100 and something, and I assume public works are a line item there for the radios now?
I don't remember what it is, but I believe we did budget something for it.
So we should have it while it's covered though.
Just two, for clarification on that bid that you see there, that includes the radio, the shoulder mic, the charging port, and a carrying case for that radio. So it is a little bit more than two, just the radio that comes with that price, so.
And Chief Miller, these are portables that each officer will carry. Will we mount any radios in the police cars in the future?
The plan is not to mount any, or like what we call a mobile radio. It'll all be on portable.
So two things with that. One, the portables have the sufficient power to be able to transmit, you know, so that the signal goes through, and we won't have the expense then of having to take one out of a car and putting it into a new car. That space is also then going to be freed up in the police car.
So for clarification on this invoice or quote, there is a $57,000 credit incentive for early purchase?
Well, that was, the ETSB Board had gotten a quote for every municipality and every organization that would be connected through Starcom to be able to buy their equipment at a substantial discount. And I think that's what this actually is, is that Starcom discount being given to us. So, but the early order incentive that I'm talking about is ordering by next Wednesday and getting the five-year warranty.
So the incentive for extended warranty is on top of this?
Correct.
So far as the Fire Department, there will be no early order incentive since this expires July 16th?
The, my understanding is that the incentive, that the discounts that they were given were being given up until the point of acceptance of the system. Does everyone believe that?
Yes.
So we won't be losing the discount by waiting for that. We'll have until June or some, whenever we accept, the county accepts the system. And unfortunately, again, our number's going to be a little bit higher than that for two reasons. Because, one, because we are required to have radios in the vehicles as well as the portable radios. And again, they're dual-banded radios, so they're more expensive. But what it does save us is from having to have two radios, one that does one system and one that does the other. So, you know, we would be paying that in some way anyway.
And our current radios have some edge to some of them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So...
The one in the office looks like an antique, let's put that way. It's probably 30 years old, I would say.
Yeah, so, right, so the thing to remember is, because we need to vacate the tower downtown, if we don't go with Starcom, we would have to put up a new tower somewhere and then move the... move the equipment and also then build the housing units to store, you know, the radio base stations in them. So from that, rather than spend money to do that, since it seems like everybody else almost in Tazewell County is going to Starcom, it allows us better communication. That's what I talked about last January, is not putting up or moving, you know, the equipment on a new tower, just spending that money to go with this system.
One last question. Chief Kelly, I believe currently, at least fire department, might be police department also, but there's a lot of problems with coverage with the existing radio system?
Yes, we, I mean, we have coverage areas. And for instance, we can go into some buildings where it won't work at all, unfortunately. So yes, there's, there's definitely coverage areas. And, and the other thing is, is that this moves us out to a much larger scale. And a great example of that is every time the ambulance goes to the hospital and is on their portable radio, we lose communication with them. So if we needed to get ahold of them in the hospital, we'd have to call them by phone, because the radios simply won't work there. This will change that, because even some of the fringe Peoria Towers will be capable of transmitting on our new system. So we'll have really county-wide coverage. And one of the things I'll mention, too, is one of our coverage problems is that when we're talking, we don't use a repeater system. The police department does. We don't have that. So when you're talking from portable radio to another portable radio, that doesn't even reach across town. I mean, so you literally have to be within blocks. Now, we could talk to the base station, but not to one portable to another. Again, this will change that so that one portable could talk to another portable across the county, you know, huge difference.
So the thing that I wanted to make sure that you're aware of is that, one, I'm pretty sure we've budgeted for the expenses. If not, I'll make sure that Julie puts any additional into the appropriation ordinance that has to be, you know, voted upon by the second meeting in July, and that we will spend, you know, money earlier in the fiscal year than I had anticipated, just to let you know.
Any other questions?
That's it for me.
Okay. Any other trustees have anything? If not, we don't need an executive session, so we could have a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.